Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Common Council meeting for October 21st, 2024. Call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Molly.
Other person Henry, here. Other person Schaefer.
Here.
Other person Valdi, here. Other person Wilkin.
Here.
Other person Grimmer.
Here.
Other person Price.
Here.
Other person Berg.
Here.
Mayor Iker.
President.
Administrator Hafner.
Here.
Thank you. And with this wonderful crowd we have here, we've got a few special orders of business, starting off with item 4A, the ceremonial swearing in. Officer Robert Leon.
All right. We'll have Officer Leon. Head forward and whoever is pinning your badge.
Quick, somebody.
So, welcome, everybody. I'm Chief Nyren with the Police Department.
It's on, it's just quiet, it's on, it's just quiet.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
Can you turn up the volume on the microphone, Mike? Thank you. Sorry about that, folks. Important night tonight.
We're happy to welcome Officer Leon to our department. He joined us this month. He comes to us with a wealth of experience from both Whitefish Bay Police Department and the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department. He obviously is here with his family. We're excited to have him start with us and join the crew for hopefully the rest of his career.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Repeat after me. I, Robert Leon, having been appointed a City of Delafield police officer.
I, Robert. Oh, jeez. I, Robert Leon, have been appointed a City of Delafield police officer. Just keep going.
Hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Well, his daughter's coming in, son.
Good job.
All right, welcome aboard, Officer Leon. Now for item 4B, a presentation of Police Department awards.
All right, I'm back. So, after we welcome Officer Leon with us, I do have some awards that were earned by officers in 2023. We're gonna cover all of those today. We're gonna start Sergeant Hoffman as a representative of the, representative of the Awards Committee is gonna be presenting the first award. And we've got three total incidents that we're awarding today with several officers receiving awards. So, please welcome Sergeant Hoffman.
Good evening, everyone. On June 8th, 2023, Detective Blado responded to the area of a crash near I-94 and Genesee Street. Detective Blado located smoke in the gore area near the westbound ramps and discovered a van occupied by a sole individual. Detective Blado determined this person was pulseless and not breathing. Detective Blado removed the occupant and immediately started lifesaving measures. Chief Nyren arrived shortly after and assisted. Both members performed CPR and applied an eight.
The patient was turned over to fire personnel. Actually, did you wanna just, just put the microphone on the, on the desk until we get a replacement? Push the button.
Can everyone hear me? All right. The patient was turned over to fire personnel and investigating troopers. It was determined that the subject had overdosed and later recovered and was arrested for various criminal charges. So, thank you, Chief Nyren and Detective Blado for your dedicated service to this department.
All right, thank you, Sergeant Hoffman. The next award is also a lifesaving award. On February 13th, 2023, Sergeant Hoffman was dispatched to a medical call with a patient having no pulse and no respirations. After arriving on scene, Hoffman immediately assessed the situation, prepped the patient, and applied a Department AED. A total of two shocks were delivered by Hoffman and he performed CPR on the subject as well. As a result of his quick actions, the patient regained a pulse and was transported to the hospital. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Personnel confirmed that quick application of the AED and CPR played a pivotal role in the recovery of the patient. Thank you, Sergeant Hoffman, for your dedication and your decision. The final awards we're gonna be presenting today go to three individuals on the department, and this is the Police Star Award. The Police Star Award is given to any member of the department whose actions are above and beyond expectations of that member's current assignment during a specific incident. Those actions must exemplify the highest level of professional commitment to the mission of the department. Officers may not be awarded this award along with the valor or lifesaving award from the same incident. On November 30th, 2023, Lieutenant Jacobs, Officer Barber, and Officer Wolfe assisted the Waukesha Sheriff's Department with the pursuit of a vehicle being driven by a missing endangered individual. Officer Barber successfully deployed tire deflation devices as the vehicle passed him on I-94. The vehicle then exited on I-94, or exited at Genesee Street and continued through downtown Delafield, eventually being disabled by a deputy utilizing the pursuit intervention technique. The suspect exited the vehicle while armed with a knife and was confronted by Lieutenant Jacobs and Officer Wolfe. Both members applied less lethal force options and successfully subdued the armed individual without significant injury. As a result of their actions, the armed suicidal individual was taken into custody to receive treatment for significant self-inflicted injuries. No members of the public or law enforcement were harmed as a result. I'd like to thank these brave officers for their actions and present them with the Police Star. Lieutenant Jacobs cannot join us today, but I'd like to welcome Officers Barber and Wolfe up front to receive their stars. I wanna thank everybody for coming today to honor these officers. That's it for our awards and swearing in, and I once again just wanna thank everyone for their support. Our department really couldn't be here and as successful as it is without everyone in this room that helps back these officers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And it's great to see everybody here with all the support you've got at home. Trust that the community of Delafield supports you equally as well, so keep it up, keep up the good work, gentlemen and ladies. All right. So, as the crowd dissipates, we can take care of less significant issues. We've got minutes from our September 16th, 2024 meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, minutes from September are now passed. Minutes from October 7th, 2024, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
That was Matt. Dirk. Any discussion?
I have a proposed correction. I realize it's only a typo, but it happens to be my name. Page three, item 10A. If you could just correct the spelling of my name as the seconder on that.
Okay.
I concur.
All right, any other discussion or questions, amendments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, minutes from October 7th are now passed with corrections. City of Delafield's citizens comments. There are no City of Delafield citizens in the audience, so I'm gonna say no. Move on. Seven, consent agenda, no items on the consent agenda. So then eight, announcement of matters for closed session. And so we are going to enter, we're looking to enter a closed session and we'll reconvene after the completion of the session to consider the balance of the agenda. So, I'm looking for a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to the following provisions. Motion to convene pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin Statute 1985-1G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely, which it is or likely to become involved, more specifically the Metropolitan Builders' Association impact fee and the precise construction boathouse door court decision. Is there a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
That's Matt.
I'll second.
Dirk, got you? Okay. Roll call vote, please, Molly.
Other person Henry.
Aye.
Other person Schaefer.
Aye.
Other person Valdi.
Aye.
Other person Wilkin.
Aye.
Other person Grimmer.
Aye.
Other person Price.
Aye.
Other person Berg.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in closed session at 7:12 PM. Please turn off your mics. Michael, take it.
Everybody ready? Okay, it's eight oh seven. We're back at the common council meeting for October 21st.
I move to reconvene into open session?
I'll second.
Danielle and Jacob, we'll call vote, please.
Other person Henry?
Aye.
Other person Schaefer?
Aye.
Other person Valdi?
Aye.
Other person Wilken?
Aye.
Other person Grimmer?
Aye.
Other person Price?
Aye.
Other person Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, we're now back in open session at eight oh eight PM. Is there any action on the open session, closed session items?
I move to withdraw the appeal of the circuit court decision regarding action with precise construction.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Or abstentions? Okay, the appeal is withdrawn, or will be. Okay, next items. Boards, committees, and commission reports. Licenses, Molly?
None.
Plan commission?
No meeting, no report.
As this is our second meeting in the same month, I go fast. Okay, Lake Welfare Committee?
We did not meet.
Park and Rec?
No meeting, no report.
Okay, Public Works?
No meeting, no report.
Delhart Commission, no meeting, no report. Police Commission?
We, we have not got a meeting, no report.
All right, Library Board?
We did meet, so I have just, I'll keep it short, but we, the book sale in Delafield is now on the first and third Saturday of the month. On October 29th, we're having a cookie, our crumble cookie fundraiser, it's from four to seven, just mention that you're there for the Delafield Library and they will donate. And cookie donations are due on December 6th, if you'd like to donate to the library's fundraiser for the seventh, the first Saturday. They do a cookie sale, no store bought cookies, and they're asking for no chocolate chip cookies because they get too many of those. So, but they sell them for $10 a pound, and it's one of the biggest fundraisers they do. So, if you want to donate cookies, they're due on December 6th.
Great. Zoning Board of Appeals?
No meeting, no report.
Okay, Promotional and Tourism?
We actually met twice. We met on October 8th, our regular meeting. The key focus was on a presentation by Z2, they are our marketing company. And they were looking and reporting to the committee about their projects for 2025. The commission will discuss 2025 marketing further in our next meeting, which is scheduled for November 12th. We also met on October 15th, the following Tuesday morning, and discussed, really, the, leaving our director of promotion and tourism is retiring, and we were putting together our future documents. Commissioners reviewed the executive director and job ad and the nature of the work documents. The final documents are prepared by the commission, they'll be sent out by October, well, actually, that time is past, I'm reading from Deb's notes. And Deb will work, the last month of her employment is scheduled for the end of February, but she will work the month of February with a new hire. And Tom has been essential and very helpful with the wording of these documents, and Crystal as well, came up with some great, I think, especially opening ideas to hook the ad. If you want to add anything, Tom, that's all I have.
No, I'll just say Crystal is excellent at what she does with that, so.
She was really good, I liked her.
I just laugh when I, when I write them, they sound so vanilla and plain, and she writes them, and they, they sound like, as it should, like, this is the best place ever to work, so, that's great.
Absolutely, yeah, they were great.
All right, thank you, Jackie. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, I know they did meet last week to discuss what the hiring plan would look like based on the different budget options that they're facing. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board?
No meeting, no report.
Okay, Dear Management Committee?
No meeting, no report.
And other committees and boards, no meetings, unfinished business, there are none. Mayor's Report, I had no exciting social events that were public that I can report on. The only thing I'll report on is, as everyone's heard and is aware, there's a vote tomorrow by the Waukesha County Board about the proposed half a percent sales tax update. And there's been lots of different opinions solicited by different people to try to sign letters and that from different city officials. I made my opinion very, very clear to our two board representatives in the city of Delafield that we have on the board, so look up yours and share your opinion with them, you still have time. Aside from that, I've got no other report. New Business, 12A, D E L C 078110302881 Crosswinds Way. This is owner Raymond Sacks requesting the approval for the removal of a portion of an existing stormwater drainage easement located on the lot he owns. Tom, fill us in on this.
This is a stormwater easement on one of the new lots at Negoica Heights. The property owner, after the fact, came to our engineering staff and asked about the possibility of vacating a portion of the easement on his property that he identified as extraneous and unnecessary, and our engineering staff agreed with his position and is recommending that we eliminate the portion of the easement. There's two documents before you, one is a document eliminating the easement, and the other one is an amendment to the, the stormwater management agreement for the subdivision. And I'm remembering that our city attorney had a special request to include one of the motions, and the document's taken a long time to open here for me, and it just opened.
It's included in item two on the agenda.
What was that, Molly?
It's included in item two on the agenda.
The one that I'm remembering is that when approving the resolution, he said, please condition common council approval on inserting the recording date and number when you make that motion. Any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion to approve the removal of the aforementioned stormwater drainage easement, D E L C 07810302881 Crosswinds Way, Heartland, Wisconsin, 53029-1266.
Second.
Inserting the?
Inserting as of 10/21/2024?
No, the recording date and number.
What is the recording date?
So, the date that gets recorded at the county.
Strike that, as of the date of the recording of the county.
So, I want to back up a little bit because we got two items.
Yeah, these documents just aren't, I don't know why they're taking so long to.
So, the first item is the First Amendment, which has to come first, and then the second is the resolution. That's where the insertion of the recording date and document number from the First Amendment needs to be included. So, I think the two items, according to the attorney, need to be approved separately and in that order.
So, I'll retract my motion, and Molly, you're saying we need A1 approved prior to A2?
Yes.
Okay, so my motion is retracted, I'll make a motion to approve Negoica Heights Development LLC Stormwater Maintenance Agreement,
Okay, item 12A, aye is now approved.
I'm not going to try again.
I'll make a motion for a double I, the adoption of Resolution Number 2024-13, a resolution to release a portion of stormwater drainage easement located on DELC 0781-030, contingent upon the insertion of the recording date and document number of the First Amendment to the Nagawicca Heights LLC Stormwater Maintenance Agreement into the resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay or abstentions? Okay, the Resolution 2024-13 is now passed. So, 12B, discussion of possible action regarding the adoption of Ordinance 836 and ordinance repealing and recreating Section 50.5A7 of the Municipal Code of the City of Delafield regarding to sanitary sewer service charges. Tom?
Yes, this resolution increases the sewer utility rates to cover cost increases by Delhart. If you look at the resolution, the quarterly sewer rate is made up of a city of Delafield portion and a Delhart portion. They implement, Delhart implemented a $3 per month or $9 per quarter increase on July 1st of this year. A mid-year increase isn't normal and we only received a two-week notice of the increase. And so, we're kind of catching up for that and this resolution would be retroactive so that the fourth quarter billing would include that increase for the third quarter that we haven't captured yet. This resolution also captures another $1 per month or $3 per quarter increase by Delhart that's being implemented on January 1st of 2025.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 836.
Second.
Oh, I had in the discussion part just that Molly and Tom and I talked about how this would be represented on the bill. There's very limited space to explain, but we're, Molly's working something up.
Correct.
That's going to give people an option to look it up themselves before they will call City Hall anyway. So, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay or abstentions? Okay, new sewer rates. Okay, item 12C, discussion regarding the Bleecker Street permit, boat launch permit restrictions as requested by Alder Person Valdi.
That would be me. I have more than one constituent, this situation has come up and I'm going to guess it's becoming more common in the city where people live in the city at least a significant part of the year. They own a home, they pay taxes, they have a boat. And it has been their habit, one family in particular, but like I said, I know several in my constituency alone that they purchase a parking sticker for the sole purpose of driving their boat, trailering their boat down, putting it in the, you know, Bleecker Street Boat Launch and then driving it to the pier. And then one gentleman literally rides his bike back to the boat launch and puts the bike in the back of their vehicle and then drives home. And then at the end of the season reverses that. So, a couple of times a year, they're using a sticker. What has happened and it's simply just enforcing an ordinance that's been around since 2017, I believe, where if you aren't a year-round resident and you don't claim the property that you own as your primary property, you can't get the sticker. And it's just frustrating, I think, for these people who are paying taxes and been a part of the community in Delafield. And so, I'm wondering if we could simply, I'm not asking for action, I'm asking for discussion and ideas to, to work with people who are taxpaying property owners and would like to just buy a boat launch sticker and that they do live in Delafield. It's not their primary residence necessarily. And yeah, that, that is something I wanted to bring up, just in discussion.
Since they're paying, they're helping to pay for that boat launch.
Right, right. And the interesting thing is they weren't complaining about getting a sticker for only using the boat launch, you know, a couple of times a year. They were frustrated because they were turned away. And, and that's, I understand that too.
So, I remember when this was first enacted, it used to be you could just buy a sticker and launch your boat there and park.
Right.
So, in this, I don't know exactly the year that this was updated, it was probably around 2011, maybe?
Was it that long ago?
Yeah, and it was switched to be residents only because there was people that weren't from the city that were buying, you know, buying.
Oh, I get you, okay, yeah.
Buying the stickers. And then there wasn't any space when the residents would go. And immediately we had complaints by, there was a dentist or chiropractor who's like, I own property, I pay taxes, I can't launch a boat here. And we said, well, sorry, because then we thought, well, everybody who owned a business in the city was saying that they want to launch their boat here even though they don't live here.
Right.
You know, how many other lake options do they have? But so, that was kind of some of the, that's, so it stuck after some of those initial complaints and it kind of went away until, till now, maybe. But, so that's something to consider as far as where you would try to distinguish property owners, residents or business owners, taxpayers.
Right.
How you want to draw the line as far as who gets to use that amenity?
I get that, but I think there's a way to do this. Just one of the things that someone brought up to me in discussion was maybe someone who owns a home on the lake and it's a, when they're not living there, maybe in the fall or in the early spring, they rent it out as a VRBO and would we allow those people to get a sticker? And I know stickers aren't transferable, but I'm also guessing that we might be clever enough to come up with a way to make it available to taxpaying property owning citizens of the city and not penalizing them for spending, you know, being snowbirds, as we call them.
I'm just, I'm explaining how it was, I'm not saying, I'm saying, those are the things you have to consider.
Yeah.
So, when I'm reading this, I'm not interpreting it as a permanent resident. I would, how is that being, is that, is that being interpreted that way?
Their term was primary residency.
Is that in here somewhere?
That's how I was told. I, I, I know that.
Because it says you just have to provide a driver's license, tax bill, rental, I mean, if you own the prop, I mean, if you own the residence and you are, this, I don't interpret this as a primary resident.
I'll bet you we've got the term resident defined in our code.
There's two, it's a twofold situation. So, the first step is that they have to establish the residency with one of those four documents. The second portion of this is that it has to go in a vehicle, so it's a very odd verbiage, but the applicant requesting issuance of an annual parking permit and the owner of each motor vehicle for which a window sticker is being requested must provide proof that the applicant and or owner of the motor vehicle is a resident of the city of Delafield. So, essentially, the way that's read to us is that whatever vehicle it's going in must belong to the resident of the city. They have to be able to prove that they're a resident of the city, that they're the owner of the vehicle. So, in a situation where you're saying if the, they would provide their tax bill, then they would essentially go park in Bleecker Street, they would likely get a ticket because the address wouldn't be a city address and then they would go to the PD. I would have to defer to Landon on how they would handle it as far as whether or not they would accept that combination of that person's name and then property address being something where the ticket wouldn't be enforced. But if somebody, let's just say, was a resident of the city and the vehicle was not in their name, they would not be getting a pass for that situation because they can't prove they're the owner of the vehicle when they park it because it's in somebody else's name. That's usually when you have, my brother drives the boat and I'm going to put it in his vehicle.
No, I understand that. I think the situation that I, I guess I was looking at is that they were told that they, it wasn't their primary residence. So, they own the property on Nagawicca, they pay taxes, their car is registered in, let's say Florida or Georgia, wherever. And, but it's registered to them. And so, we can connect the name and the residence. So, I just think we should be able to work with this. It's not rocket science and these are not necessarily the people who are leaving their vehicles there. And it's ironic, I'm having this discussion because I'm a stickler for that boat launch because I'm there all the time and it drives me nuts when I see, it doesn't happen very often, mind you, thank you, Landon. But it is a situation that just constituents have come to me and I have noticed more and more, just in my little area, that there are now several people who live on the lake part-time and don't live in Delafield at all other parts of the year. And are we going to penalize them just for launching their boat? You know, they're just trying to, you know, they're not leaving it, but I just think there's a way to.
So, you want us to fix that situation with the snowbird, kind of?
Yeah, the snowbird thing, maybe the snowbird exception. I don't know.
Does that make sense to everybody?
How many times, this has happened a lot? I mean, yes?
I would.
More and more, I'll bet, more and more.
I would say quite frequently.
So, if they have a sticker though, right, that is the, that is the determining factor if they should get a ticket or not, correct?
So, no.
Yeah, go ahead, Chief, we have an expert witness.
Okay.
I'm really sorry, Brandon, I didn't mean to make you stay for this.
There's two things that I wanted to station for. So, the, the first part that happens is they get the sticker at City Hall. Then when they park in the, the launch, our officers, it's, it's been a practice for a while now and we are absolutely willing to change this practice. They will run the registration of the vehicle and if it doesn't list to Neshota or the city of Delafield, then that violates the, the residency requirement of the, the ordinance is the direction we've taken. We are okay with changing our practice where if City Hall verifies that they're a resident and they are issued a sticker, where all we will verify is that the sticker issued is on the licensed vehicle that it was issued to.
What happens then is people will buy a sticker for themselves, their brother in New Berlin, their sister in Oconomowoc.
Well, couldn't, wouldn't you notice that? Like if they buy several?
They're allowed to buy several.
But then you would ask for the vehicles, but yeah, I just think there's got to be a way, rather than to penalize the snowbirds for some other, that there is a way to make this work. I don't know that we can think of it instantaneously in this moment, which is why I wanted to bring it up. Because again, the complaints that I've gotten, and there's only been a couple, but I just see it unfolding just on my little street where it's going to happen more often. And these people are not leaving their vehicles at the Bleecker Street Boat Launch for maybe more than the time it takes them to go home and then come back after they've parked their boat at their dock for the summer. So, these are not the people who are necessarily buying the stickers for their Uncle Albert, you know, in Leftover Shoe, Nebraska, but they're people who actually live here and there just has to be a, a way to accommodate them.
I believe staff would be willing to meet and brainstorm.
Okay, I can do that.
My thought is that we wouldn't be able to, to meet the requirement of somebody else's car. I mean, if somebody lives in New Berlin, then that's not going to be a registration that's, that's going to meet the need, is it, Molly?
So, we, again, we're looking for those four documents upfront to prove their residency. The problem that you get is that you, we always say before they leave that it needs to go on a vehicle registered to the city of Delafield resident. Otherwise, you'll get a ticket, that's pretty much what we tell them. Because we're trying to prevent them from giving it to their brother, their sister, whatever. In the situation that Jackie is talking about, perhaps, you know, them checking to make sure that the residential, because we, we provide them a list, so maybe like the name of the person who bought the sticker matches, the, the name on the registration versus an address match could perhaps do that. I mean, I do have an occasional person who does not at all live in the city, they have a rental property in the city and they're not a resident at all, but they are a taxpayer. So, I guess it, you, those would be the people that would still, in that situation, qualify because their property address would match, their name would be on that tax bill, but they don't live here. And they, if you only looked at the name on the vehicle registration versus the address, that's the situation where you would have a non-resident here. But if it's up to the, you know, the council, how you guys, if that's okay.
Can we put the sticker on the vehicle or, no, no, I mean, instead of just handing them the sticker? That's the only other way to verify that that vehicle is in fact registered to that individual is if.
Well, they have.
The police department or.
A plate name, I mean, they'd have to bring up the registration. I wouldn't want to put it on the sticker, but I mean.
They're already matching to the plate, that's something we're doing, but that's what we are matching. We could match off name. I believe the police department would like to not have to run every license plate in the Bleecker Street Boat Launch.
Sure.
But that's what we have to do right now and that's what we've been doing.
That seems like a bit of overkill. I think one of the things that it was said to me, and this was from a, you know, a constituent, was that they were told they had to be a primary residence as Delafield, not, you know, so if your vehicle had a Florida plate on, you can't, even though you own the home in Delafield, because your vehicle is registered to Florida, you can't get a sticker. And that's the, that's the hook that I find something, you know, that we should be able to work through. Just, I think it's going to come up more and more that people are owning more than one home and it is on our lake.
Let's, let's put it on an agenda for a staff, staff meeting and we'll.
Okay.
Brainstorm some ideas to.
Thank you, Tim.
Make this simpler.
I can stick around for the next one, too.
Okay, discussion, item 12D, discussion regarding the city's wake boat guidelines regarding feedback related to the impact of the guidelines and whether additional follow-up is necessary as requested by Alder Person Schaefer, touching the third rail of recreational water sports. Mark, what are, what are your thoughts?
The, well, I think we have, there are two things we're trying to protect. One is the, the wildlife of the lake, two is the people on the lake. And the, the guidelines, I think, just based on some preliminary research, have done some good. I've talked to people who live on the lake and said, have you noticed the difference? And, and, and they said, it's still the occasional yahoo out there, but it seems to be better, seem, people seem to be staying away from the shore more. That said, I don't think they're staying away from other boats and, and Chief, do you want to, I've got.
Yeah.
Officers' notes here, but.
So, basically, I reached out after Alder Person Schaefer reached out to me to our detective who does the most boat patrol and asked for his feedback on wake boats and what he's seen out there. And he, he said, yeah, common sense was mainly prevailing, especially with the guidelines for the wake boats in regards to the shoreline and then where they were staying. The issue he saw mostly was when he was engaged in a boat stop, that wake boats were not keeping a good, a far enough distance away. Now, that's a matter of perspective, it may be they were outside the legal distance, but they were experiencing significant wakes while tied up next to another boat and conducting that, that enforcement or that safety check. And so, that's one of the concerns and he said that there were a few times where they, it may in the future lead to causing hazardous wake citations for people who are operating too close to the other boats. And that may be something that we explore as a possible modification in the ordinance, if recommended, especially we're going to be changing our, our common practice. We don't like to draw too much attention when we're on a boat stop, but we're kind of given no choice now to leave the, the blue lights flashing while they're engaged through the duration of that boat stop, just to make, kind of get that halo effect around the stop, hey, if you're operating a wake boat, if you're, you're just any boat, please steer clear of this because we're going to be, we're trying to engage in, in, you know, a professional encounter that, and we really don't want to cause damage to other boats from banging together, you know, there's a lot, you know, our boats, one thing, but there's a lot more nice boats out there that we don't want to be banging against even with our bumpers. And so, that's, that's the main concern we have from the law enforcement aspect is just keeping that distance from our stops and then just keeping an eye on them from anchored boats and things like that. But a lot of that's only happening on the west side of the lake, which they have been avoiding.
The thing that struck me when reading those notes where they're stopped, there's a wave crashing, a wake crashing over the boat. a wave crashing, a wake crashing over the boat, so he leaves his emergency lights on. And I thought, gee, I wish I had emergency lights because it's the same thing for other boaters. If you're stopped, you're out there fishing, or if you're, I've been just cruising along slow, and a wake boat comes the other direction, and you take a three-foot wake broadside, it goes over the deck of my boat. If you're in a, and it's a pontoon boat, if you're in a V-hull boat, you're probably going like this.
We are, we have a V-hull, and it's, it's astonishing. And then we make jokes because it's a Boston Whaler, and they're unsinkable. So I'm always like, well, we might find out.
It's dangerous if you're not prepared. And, and just considering that, you know, maybe, do we need to put this into the code somewhere?
A guideline, I mean, it's a, it's a guideline, and we post it at the launch.
Make it a little more.
Is it posted at the county launch?
Yeah.
The map? It's not?
It's handed out, or it's, the patrol boat has it to hand out.
Okay, we might want, I mean, I don't want to get too far into the Lake, Lake Welfare's area because I trust that, that this is not a new topic for you guys.
No.
But I think that's where this should definitely start.
Yeah.
And, and spawn from. But as far as, you know, I'd like what Chief says, if you, I mean, if, if, I would fully endorse the fact that if, I'm sure the council would, if there's a stop going on and the lights are on and somebody, an officer deems that there's a, something putting that situation into peril or has, there's a hazardous condition caused by someone, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to give them a citation for that. That would be, especially if they've got the fair notice that the, with the lights on. I know it's embarrassing, but they, then they get to talk about it all day, too. Well, you know, if they got, but I would, I, I would love the discussion over how we'd, how we'd pursue the wake, wake boat ordinances and that, or updated guidelines or how we distribute them. I like that the, come from Lake Welfare.
Could we refer with a request to Lake Welfare to look into it and review this?
Definitely.
Come up with some recommendations?
We'll do it at our next meeting.
Okay, all right. Paul, Paul's on it. I don't think they're going to get, I don't, I don't, there's no shortage of requests to talk about wake boats at.
No.
Lake Welfare. But if there's something about how we, how the council could help allocate some resource to make awareness greater, let us know. I mean, bring it forward, and we'll give us something, give us something to act on, right?
Okay, cool.
The, the, the one line in here, every, make every possible precaution to avoid small boats. I think I would remove the word "small." They should be avoiding all boats.
Paul, you guys talk to the yacht club a lot.
Yeah.
I got to imagine. And just, I'm thinking about, say, there's a lot of regattas out there, a lot of young sailors out there, and I've got a couple in my family, and definitely have noticed that. So have that as part of the discussion as well.
I'm officially staying out of it until we get some recommendations. It's a tough, it's a tough topic.
Yeah.
And I know the state's working on it, too, and we'll, I think it's going to be stalled for a long time. I think the best we can do is come up with really good guidelines and, you know, if there's, when it's enforceable, let's enforce it, you know, when safety is definitely an issue, so. But love to hear from Lake Welfare.
Okay, you will.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Landon.
All right, item 12E, approval of the voucher list.
I will move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay or abstentions? Okay, the vouchers are approved. Report of city officials, city administrator, Tom.
Just report on a couple of events coming up. First of all, the Houseman family has donated a memorial bench in honor of former municipal Judge Houseman for his 40 years on the bench. And we will be having an unveiling ceremony for that. That's this coming Saturday, October 26th at 1:00. It's going to be in Liberty Park, just on the north side of the bridge. I know Jane Houseman reached out to former Police Chief Eric Cale to come and say a few words, a couple of their neighbors, Jim Nelson and Norm Ream, and myself. I'll be saying a few words on behalf of the city. So if anyone is looking for something to do in the mid-afternoon, feel free to stop out. Then as far as budget schedule, we had this on the last agenda, but just as a reminder again, we do have our annual budget workshop coming up this Thursday. And as a reminder, that's going to be in the public safety building training room, 6:00 start time for that. And then the public hearing and the action on the budget will take place as part of our two normal council meetings in November respectively. So that'd be November 4th for the public hearing and November 18th for the action on the budget.
All right, thanks, Tom. City clerk.
I had the general election update. As of when I was writing this, on the 18th, we had sent out 1,004 absentee ballots. We've had 523 return. We did the special voting deputy visit to Heritage. We had nearly 50 voters there, so that was a pretty high return there. And then in-person absentee starts tomorrow during the regular business hours through November 1st. I am here until 5:00 on November 1st. Otherwise, it's 8:00 to 4:30. And then polls, of course, open at 7:00 AM on November 5th here at City Hall in the chambers, and the in-person absentee will also be in the chambers. There is a flyer, too, if anybody wants to print it out and post it around the neighborhood.
Or go to our website. All right, thanks, Molly. City treasurer, look in the packet for the report if it's there. I think we had one last week, our last meeting. D, council requests for future agenda items. Three, two, one, none. If you come up with any, reach out to staff. And 14, correspondents, look in the packet. And without any further business to do, we've got an adjournment at 8:44 PM. Thank you.